Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee Joint City Council Meeting with the Shakopee Public Utilities Board for March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-two. And a roll call for the City Council?
Here.
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 Councilmember Lehman's absent, Mayor Mars.
Here, thank you very much. And now we would turn over to President Mokko to open her part of the meeting.
Mr. Drant, will you please call the roll for the commission?
Yes, President Mokko.
Here.
Vice President Fox.
Also here.
Commissioner Laterno.
Here.
Commissioner Brennan.
Here.
Commissioner Creed.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Both meetings are open. And item number two, well, welcome. First, before we begin here, our first joint meeting of two thousand and twenty-two, and later in the meeting, we'll talk about another one, probably later this fall. And it's great to be together again.
Thank you.
Item number two, approval of the agenda. Any changes, corrections, deletions?
Not from the city, sir.
And not from?
I'll make a-
Counselor Whiting?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as stated. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? The joint agenda's been approved. And then, do you want to vote on that, too?
Yes, I would prefer to vote.
That's fine, I'm sorry.
Commissioners, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I will also motion to also approve the agenda.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Madam President, thank you very much. The joint agenda's been approved, and we'll just move ahead. And three A, Shakopee Public Utilities Year in Review.
Thank you. And I got this agenda item. So thank you again for everyone for meeting. I think it was great that Bill and I talked about this. And we thought it was great that we were able to get together again. And one of the things I wanted to go through the last time, we had some agenda items. And I just wanted to kind of just take a step back from SPU side of things on what we accomplished. I don't want this to be a long dialogue, but just kind of some of the things that we went through throughout the year, this last year. So I think it's up there on there. So we started with the general manager search was the big topic of a goal that we needed to accomplish last year. Electric vehicle service territory was another one, which we'll address a little bit later on in the presentation. We did an organizational structure review that our commission approved. Obviously, one of the goals at the beginning of two thousand twenty-one was we needed to work with the city on multiple projects. And obviously, everyone can see we're doing that. We did an electric rate comparison and made some changes. We did a water rate comparison. And we have a new billing system that is going to, and finance billing system that's going to come on board with NISC. And we started an AMI project. On the administrative side, joint meetings are happening. We had a pilot agreement and the economic development. We thought that was a great thing to get done behind us. Compensation study. We did an SPU support for struggling with some of the effects of COVID. We had some additional funds that were available if they met criteria. So we gave out some money on that. We've been working on a facility addition. We put up a drive-up. So our customers now, we have a grand opening coming up on the twelfth, but our customers now can drive up. We thought this was important with COVID as well. So, you know, some of the interactions don't have to be face-to-face. We can get that drive-up in place. We had some investment managers, PFM Asset Management, to invest some of our money more wisely. We heard that, and we needed to make sure we did that. So we have a team working on that. We have NISC, obviously, I talked about that. Katama is a consultant we use that is building our platform for AMI. So we're super excited about that. And we, again, want to participate in Flower Basket. We changed our deposit policy. That was another big thing that we talked about. How long should we keep people's money? And what we looked at, we heard some constraints on that. Some businesses wanted to reduce that. So we looked at that and changed that. And then we also updated our purchasing policy. So we had clear expectations from everyone. Community Garden was another exciting thing that we did this last year. And we were super excited to keep that moving forward. We did a land swap with D.R. Horton. We changed some water connection capacity charges for developers. We had a water rate study and potential treatments. We think that we need to continue to explore that. We're working with the school district on some land and some other things. So we need to make sure that we're prepared if there is some contaminants that we need to address. West End and East End Study with the city, we did joint projects on those. We upgraded to, we had a plastic service line from the curb stop to the home. We approved that, which is a change in our policy, which we, some of our developers were asking for that. And water rate study, and then PFOS sampling, which all those came back. We were underneath the limits there. So we're excited about that. We did purchase some west Shakopee substation land, which we'll be building that this year. Obviously, Levy Drive was a huge project down there, still ongoing, but just about done with that. Last year, we took the electric lines and buried them. And we'll continue to move on water this year and get that project done. Electric vehicle chargers, which that'll be part of the conversation later on. Service territory, which we got done, and an agreement in place. Electric rate study, we just want to make sure our rates are in line. We did approve an electric vehicle rate. So we have, I just talked to somebody today on that. And we have some customers that are signing up for an off-peak rate so they can charge their vehicles at night. And we had a line from south Shakopee all the way over to our west end, so we can feed that area the growth right now. But really, we need that substation in that late, that corridor. Obviously, we had a new feeder around Canterbury. We had some lines that needed to be moved there. And then we had County Route forty-two did an upgrade by the casino that we also worked on. That was another big one. And with that, with American Public Power, we do work, do on some workforce development. And we really work hard at what we're doing for leadership, for efficiencies in operations, reliability standards. And in two thousand twenty-one, we did get the Diamond Designation Award for, from the American Public Power last year. So we got that again for the, for the second time, second or third time. So we were excited about that. That's a three-year assignment there. So again, this just looks at how reliable, safe workforce development and safety improvement. So we're excited to get that. So and then the last four years, we've had a certificate of excellence in reliability. So that's another big project that, that we file with APPA and get an award for that if we meet certain criterias. So I know that there was a lot of fast stuff, but I didn't want it to be a long, drawn-out conversation. But I just want to say, hey, this is some of the high-level things that we worked on as an organization, just so you can see that, you know, I know the city's got many, many projects that we hear about all the time. And, you know, we're working on stuff on the utility side of things. And it's been an exciting year. So with that, I will stand for any questions.
I'd just like to comment. You know, in the last couple of years, and to where we are today, you had three slides there of accomplishments. I'd like to thank Manager Drant and your board that have carried the day through these issues over the last couple of years. I view all those issues as resolved. Big sense of pride here of where we've come, where we've been, where we are today. We're sitting around the table today talking about accomplishments. I know personally, for me, that's a big sense of pride and a job well done. So thank you, Shakopee Public Utilities. Thank you to the board. I mean, our hometown messenger came out, electric car on the front with the dual logos and the partnership. This wouldn't have happened five years ago, right? So hats off, salute. Thank you for your hard work. It wasn't easy, but I'm just amazed that there were three slides of significant accomplishments to come together, collaborate in partnership with the city and for betterment of the utility. Thank you.
And Mayor, I just want to say, I want to thank your support from the, from the council side, because if you would not have made changes to our board, we wouldn't be where we're at. And so I appreciate that you guys were willing to do that in that respect. So I know that's hard on the political side at times, but we appreciate it.
Others, yeah?
No, just no real questions. But again, what a difference, you know, a little bit of time makes. So great turnaround. All the accomplishments are great. You know, I'm looking forward to hearing about that service territory acquisition and the conversation with MVC, EDC, and those things. So I'm looking forward to hearing what's coming up. We know where we've been, but it's, it's completely changed. So I'm glad to hear it and glad for everybody's success and congratulations.
Thank you.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, everybody's saying it, you know, congratulations on everything. It's amazing that we are working together. This is something that I spoke to Mr. Reynolds about. And I said, we have to be proud of this. Because at the beginning, when I was running, it was like, oh, God, we can't get along. You can't do this, you know. And as we were working, we can't stand each other. You can't, you know. But being here together on this, you know, day, everybody working together and seeing the accomplishment, accomplishments from you guys and us, it's, it's great. It's great work. And I'm just glad to say that we did it. It's awesome. So congratulations to everybody.
Well, it's really been a real pleasure to work with the staff and with the, with the commission to get things done. There's just such an open communication and a willingness to hear and listen on the commission. So I guess that's all I have. We did, we did do a lot. And I think there's a few more things on that that could be added to that list.
There is.
But, you know, it's amazing what we go through and what you all have gone through. So thank you very much.
Others?
I'd like to comment, kind of as a new member here, I think this is a great standard going forward, right? I don't really have a great, I have an understanding of what happened before. But setting the precedent of this going forward, I think is huge. And I think if we can, we will continue that. I know we will. But I think that's something to keep in mind, so.
Great. Yeah, I think, you know, here we are, we're kind of reminiscing a little bit of the past. But I want to assure you from a city standpoint, and I can see it and feel it in the utility, that we're all facing the same direction. And we're all looking forward, right? And that's the best part about it. And if there would be no more comments on the Year in Review, we can move ahead to actually those forward-thinking items. And three B, service territory. Greg, are you going to present?
Yeah, I will present some. And I think Mr. Kurski's also got a little bit to talk about on the west end. And I believe if, we have service territory, water tower eight, we have a well field, west Shakopee substation, and potential treatment if needed are some of our topics that, that we want to talk about this and on the west Shakopee. So all these topics are really for the growth that's going to potentially happen in, in our west side out there. But first of all, is, is service territory. So this map is just kind of a high-level map of what our service territory looks like. In blue on the outside there, it used to go through, and Minnesota Valley had some of the green in there. And purple was Minnesota, was SPU. That's just wetlands down there. There's not really development on the left side of your screen there. But the green really was Minnesota Valley and some of that industrial park. And then also in all of Jackson Township. So when, when I went and talked to Minnesota Valley, we looked at it as a, as a whole of Jackson Township. We currently serve some of Jackson Township before the agreement, but not all of Jackson Township. And we thought it was important that rather than trying to piecemeal this every year that the annexations happen, now we have to have another agreement with Minnesota Valley. We took a step back and said, is there a way for us to get an agreement in place where we get all of Jackson Township right now? So that's the approach I had. Frustration, I guess, on a little bit, we had to give up a little bit. But that's negotiations. We have some land all the way out in Prior Lake, right, that butts up to the lake in Prior Lake, south of forty-two. So we had some talks about if we give them that, could we get all of Jackson Township? By the letter of the law, the only way we get all of Jackson Township would be in an agreement. We don't, they don't have to give it up. We really needed to give something up in order to get all of Jackson Township. So now, up in the screen now, in blue, is all of that area that is in blue is now Shakopee Utilities Service Territory. So all of Jackson Township currently is that. We have an agreement, a signed agreement in place. We have to file with the PUC to change the territory maps. I forwarded a letter to Minnesota Valley yesterday. So we're going to do it jointly. So I forwarded a letter yesterday to, to talk about that. And then it's really a stamp of approval. They don't really approve or not approve. They just say, yep, okay, we'll change the territory map if we have an agreement in place. So the exciting part of the agreement, the part that I wanted, was the, the white area inside of the blue is what's currently the city limits. So that's already annexed in, in that area. So we have, we don't have to pay any mill rate on that. And a mill rate is a certain cents per kilowatt hour back to them for lost revenue. So all that industrial park in area there, we have to pay zero mills. That was a trade for giving up the area in red. We got that. So we don't have to pay any mill rate in that. The rest of the area in blue, when it's developed, we have to pay half the normal mill rate. So it's called fifteen mills. So we do have to pay them for ten years on some of the land. But it's more residential. And most of that commercial area out there, we will have to pay zero mills on it. So, so that was an exciting, fun negotiation. And we got through it. We got through it fairly quickly. They were happy that we were able to balance giving up some customers. So we're actually taking back about seven million kilowatt hours, and we're giving up about eight million kilowatt hours. So that's why it was a wash for customers. So we're not, no, any of the existing customers, we don't have to pay a mill rate. And then anything in the city limits right now, we don't have to pay a mill rate. So future development or future annexations, we have to pay a mill rate. But it's, again, it's half the normal rate. So most of them right now are about thirty mills, and we negotiated it at fifteen mills. So that's a signed agreement, and it's, it's done. So we're excited to move on on that. And really, all of Jackson Township. And then when they know if it goes to Louisville Township, we're going to have some of those same discussions. So, but they're, they're willing to work with us. So we're excited. We're, we're working on potentially some other projects with Minnesota Valley as well. So they're, they're looking at opening some, a call center and maybe a potential partnership there. We're looking at, is there a way to have some solar in the area together? So we're, we're having some of those meetings and seeing if something sticks and having that. So we're excited. We're going to have an interconnection with them. So if we need backup, they can provide that. If they need backup, we can provide that to them, kind of like what we do with some of our water stuff with Savage. We're going to also do that with Minnesota Valley. So we're excited to keep that relationship moving forward. So and then on the water tower side of things, we were able to get a water tower tank number eight up on top of the hill. It's seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons. That is in service as of a couple of weeks ago. So it is completely ready to go. And we are using that. So we're excited that this growth in this area, and I know Michael's got some discussions on what that looks like in, in the future here. But we're excited that the substation site and the water tower site right there are close, and we can feed this west end. So we're really excited about that. And that is completely online and ready to go. So the next one, I just wanted to show you. So just as it referenced, the area in blue there is where the water tower site is, and that we do have enough land there if we need some treatment. We can put a treatment plant there. And then we can also put three wells on that site. We got the spacing for that. And we're looking at maybe one more lot to the north for a fourth, if, if we have some heavy industrial uses in that area that we need some extra, we could buy some potential land. We just need some separation for drawdown and stuff. But we can, we got, we do have enough separation for three. We're drilling well number twenty-three this spring to fill this tank. And then we also have the booster station that fills this tank as well. And then the area in red, up on top there, that's where on Colburn, that's where our substation site is. So we have a substation transformer order that's going to be delivered in September or October. And just got some emails on some other stuff that they're bidding out. But really, we're looking at building that later this year for a two thousand twenty-three in-service date. So we have, we have the spot for two substation transformers there. We're going to put two, up to two twenty-eight MVA transformers. Unless we need some additional capacity, we can always upsize that second transformer if we need to. We are going to put one in right away and see how growth goes. And then if, when we need the second one, we can put that second one in there. Be building a new road down to Emery Way. And then again, you can see over here, this road will connect down to Old Brickyard. The county has a project for next year to do a roundabout here at this intersection. So there's going to be a lot of growth out in this area. The colored area are areas that the city is working on this year annexing in. So the XL plant, the residential area, we're trying to clean up, the state asked us to try and clean up this area so that it all would be in the city. There is a remaining parcel down here that we could annex in. And then actually, the township owns a small piece over here that we met with them. They asked if we could kind of take in this whole intersection, whichever, whatever was in Jackson Township. The golden area is the next big expansion area for residential. There's a couple of developers that are looking at that area to take it down over the next five to ten years. So that'll be a major expansion for single family. I point out the Opus site. We submitted this site to the state of Minnesota. They had a request for a major company with seven hundred and fifty employees, but they were also a major water user and power user. Greg, to his credit, answered a phone call on late Friday evening. The state had come back with some very specific questions for the client they're working with, and whether Shakopee Public Utilities through this new water tank and that new substation could meet their water demands and power demands. And he ran some numbers and said yes. So that site was accepted by the state of Minnesota to be submitted to their client as a potential location. Is there any questions that you have on, on those topics that we just discussed?
Counselor?
So we've, in the past, we've always talked about that third high elevation. And Mr. Kurski just talked about business potential that's going to be a high water user for that location, using that water from the new water tank. Knowing this, that, that third high elevation, so are we covered for, for all those different elevations now? And are we covered at a full build-out? Or are we going to still need some water storage and tanks?
Um, we may need some storage, but not in that area. It would be more towards the east a little further. We have some development that they're working on, that we have one other tank that we were looking at. Depending on if it goes into Louisville, we may someday need it. But we don't, you know, until we get further down there. But we're definitely set up for that area plenty good. That is in the second, so that second high zone is where that's at. The actual Opus is in the first high zone. So we're running that water line with the city along one sixty-nine, across the Bregman Parcel, and, and through that. And that's how that site will, will feed it. And then we will, if we have a large user like that, we will put in that PRV and those lines down to it for really the redundant feed is what it has to be. So we need to go through some pressure-reducing valves to get it down to the right, because it's at two different elevations.
That's the second high elevation on that tower.
So the second high is up on top, up in Windermere and where that tank is. And it's actually, the first high is where the Opus is. And then across there is actually the normal zone on the other side of one sixty-nine. So it's kind of all that right in that area. It could be three pressure zones. But we have a way to go through pressure-reducing valves to feed that. So if, if a heavy user like that would come in, we would, we would need, and the commission would make decisions to, to get that extra redundant feed there, we would probably have to drill a second well. So we are drilling the one well right now. And then we would probably end up drilling a second well right away if we had a large user like that. We could, we, we have enough capacity right now, but we would need it for extra storage and capacity in that area.
Okay. Next. Other questions? I guess I just really want to compliment and congratulate you on completing the service territory. I know that's been up for discussion for a long time. I think that sets it up for, again, facing forward and looking forward. And as the map, as the annexation occurs and the need is there, you guys are pretty prepared. I appreciate that. And interesting to watch the build-out of the tower on the west end when, you know, during the winter, and there were, there wasn't any homes around it, right? And it looked like, wow. And it actually reminded me of the, the tank on Fuller Street, because that's the way it was back then, too. And then just to look at, there's the tank. And if we could just fast-forward five years, it'll all be filled in with homes. And now their homes are coming. And I drive out in that area once a week and look at it. So pretty, pretty good. And it's great that both the water buildup and capacity and holding power along, and then with the substation for future needs of that business park and those homes there, that's great. Is your, that, that water tower interconnected with all the other, am I, I live over by High V. When I turn my faucet on, am I getting water from there?
Well, I mean, probably not, but you could. I mean, if it was the only water tower on, absolutely. Yeah. I mean, through pressure-reducing valves and gets through the service, they're all interconnected. Every one of our towers are interconnected, either through booster stations or pressure-reducing valves. So it's a, the system is all connected. So yeah, in theory, but you know, certain areas use those towers. But yes, absolutely. It helps the whole system through pressure-reducing valves at the different elevations.
And to follow up on Counselor Whiting's question, you guys have additional availability for future storage over off of Wood Duck Trail, right?
Correct. Yep, yep.
Other questions, comments? All right. Let's move ahead then to item three C, the electrical vehicle charging network update. And you guys presenting again, welcome.
Yeah. Well, I, this has been, this has been a, a joint effort, really, with, with city staff on where we thought was appropriate to make sure that we have some EV charging in, in the system. Our commission has been very adamant that we want to have some of these. We want to get in this game somewhat. But there's been a balance of, do you put them where businesses are? Or do you put them in community spots? And, you know, are gas stations eventually going to become charging stations and different things like that? So, so, so there's some of the things that we think about and talk about. But really, early on, we, we thought, let's work with the city. We worked with the city on where is a good locations? Where would you think you would want some of these? The city had a grant for two chargers, or three chargers, I think it was. And so they had asked us if to partner on that. We're working with MMPA. We've had some struggles. I'm not going to kid you on that, on, on getting the chargers to work properly. It's been a little frustration. We do, we think we got a solution. And we'll have them in place by this spring. So really, the, the city grant ones were downtown. And then one- So um really, the the city grant ones were downtown, um and then one at the community center. And then City Hall, South Bridge Dog Park, uh we have one at SPU Service Center, and Lions Park were the other locations that were chosen to have these. Um we've talked with city staff as well, is is there future ones that we should have, where would you like to see them? You know, we don't have any budgeted for twenty twenty-two, but I think going forward, we wanted to get these in place and then see what it looked like, see what some of the usage is. See if somebody's asking for them in certain locations, and then we we plan on maybe potentially putting more out. So um the first slide there is on is on the west end. Um we're gonna put one at our substation um on the far left on the west side. Um we have Lions Park, we're gonna put one after the new parking lot is in, so we're gonna make sure on that. And then behind the community center, so we have run some of the wires on some of these already. We're just waiting for the chargers right now and lead times on some of the chargers. Um and then downtown, we've got two we're gonna put side by side, so we're actually gonna have uh potential, there'll be two stations there, four chargers on Lewis Street Parking Lot for downtown. Um we have the the one at um city, city hall here, but that's to charge their own vehicles, so we put that one in red. And then we have one at the Shakopee Public Utilities um there uh on the right-hand side of that. And then we also um uh put one at the south, we're gonna put one at the South Bridge Dog Park. Um and so when people come to to, you know, spend to go walk trails or wanna exercise their dogs, they're able to do that. And then the last one is the map of of where we have it, so we've got one on the far right side on the, and that's the the dog park one. And then really in the central, and then we're gonna add the one on the west end is kind of where we're at right now. So we've tried to find some spots that we think are are gonna be utilized and and get some people to charge. Um we think that the majority of the charging is done at home on an off-peak rate, right? We really think that that's really what happens, that's really what needs to happen. I mean, just for infrastructure, that's the best thing for us. I mean, and we'll have rates for that, you know, so when air conditioning load drops off, now we have EV charging coming on, our and our system can handle it. Um we're not concerned on that yet, but um with AMI, we'll be able to monitor that much better. Um see loads, unloading on transformer, where things are at. So we just try to s- kind of scatter some, and again, this was input uh with us and the city say we wanna do some. And um and then we decided on these locations for now, so. Um we wanna expand it, we're we're open to say, hey, what, where's the next best location? And really, I think we're looking at twenty-three, uh if we wanna expand that, put in our budget and expand some more and see how the this is going. So that's what I had, I don't know if Mr. Kurski had or had anything else on that one, so.
So on the EV charging stations, does doesn't Hy-Vee have a couple too?
Yeah, those are private, but I believe they're drawing your power, right?
Yep, yep, they're drawing our power, they're they're private, they're, I think they're just hundred and ten volts. So they're they're a much slower charger, so they're not gonna get you much range. I mean, even at two hundred and forty volts, these things take three to four hours to charge. Um if you, if you're empty, I mean, if you wanna only just get a boost to get enough, you, hey, you made it this far, you wanna get home, um that type of thing. But really, to get a full tank on level two, it's three to four hours.
Well, I was just thinking, uh I know we had a couple downtown and I know one at Lions Park, but if you talked about another location, I was thinking possibly Huber Park. Um having another one downtown, maybe uh not so good, because I did see kind of a big hole in the middle of the city as well too, so. I'm not sure where you wanna go there, but a couple of ideas.
Yeah, and I and I think we'll work with city and staff on on where they see uh the next park that's utilized the most and and where where things are going. So uh we're not opposed to it, we just wanna get these things up and running and see how much usage we do get over the next little while.
What kind of analytics do they provide, like usage and feedback like that?
As far as who?
The chargers, like do you, how many vehicles use them, how long the average load?
Yeah, I, they they didn't give us specifics, I mean, it all depends, I mean, it's, it depends on, you know, how many people come in and what location and, you know, so. But we can monitor that and we can skip.
Get those questions.
So so we can monitor that, once we get them and put them in place, we can say what times they're charging, how many times and how many kilowatt hours have run through them and stuff like that. So we'll be able to monitor that, yes.
Do the chargers identify specific vehicles in any way, like so they can see repeat users?
Um I would think that would be uh on an app if they do, and I haven't dug into that enough to see. So I would, we can find out if it's one user going to the pool or going there to walk their dog and and they always use it. Um that would, might be on an app-based type of deal, they could see that, but um I haven't dug into that yet.
I'm just curious to see like individual users versus.
Yeah, I think uh, you know, from a couple of years ago discussing this and uh increase in popularity. And then here we are today talking about, what, seven or eight? They're not all there yet, but if we fast forward to this fall, it sounds like they'd, and then I think there will be a learning curve. Uh use of uh amount of use and and things like that of for what's best for the community. You know, I think private businesses will be doing it, they'll be in gas stations, but I think critically for the community, uh we gotta have them in the spots. And I think we we need more data, right? We need them up and running and see um and then the next, the next spots, right? Um so, you know, and the the adapters, I'm sure they all have adapters, I mean, how many different cell phones, cords have we gone through? And now it seems like they're almost better, because it's down to a couple, but uh, you know, you, everybody has a little bag of cords that you have no idea what to go to.
Major ones, there's Tesla and then there's the, then everyone else, so, so and you, so it's just, it's just how it is.
Are these units movable, if we say this site's ever getting used, can we pick it up and we'll have to rewire it?
I mean, yeah, kind of, not really, but I mean, you'd have to rewire everything, you'd have to rip out the old wiring, so it's pretty tough. But I mean, if we have one that's just never being used, I mean, and we think we can utilize it somewhere else, we can have that discussion on um, but it would take, it would be a significant effort. It's not like you just pull it up and move it and set it down, so you would have to remove some stuff too, so.
Other questions? Okay, um let's move forward then, and we're gonna talk, go from water and power. Now, oh, back to water a little bit, three D, west end and east end sewer lift station.
Left state.
Steve.
All right, good evening, everybody. Um so at the west end, we had a, some figures of all the annexation areas, um where the water tower is. We're setting ourselves up to extend the water and the sanitary sewer to those areas that will need to be serviced. Um so part of that is extending the water main and sanitary sewer to just south of the proposed lift sta- or the proposed um SPU substation there along Conner Road sixty-nine. Um this project, uh the plans are a hundred percent complete, and um we are heading into advertising and the bidding process. Um we expect the the bids to be open on April fifth with a anticipated bid award on the nineteenth. Um and that would be awarded at that time. Um and then we'll get into constructing it, so another quick-paced project. Um I do wanna point out that if you're out in that area and you saw some trees removed along the trunk highway one sixty-nine as part of our project. Um we had to advance uh that part of the project to remove those trees because we have to have a MINDIT utility permit. And as part of that permit, um there's a requirement to, um because there's an endangered species out there, I think it's the long-eared bat. They are nesting um right around the March thirty-first area, so we can't touch those trees in that timeframe. So we went out and got the trees out of the way, so we didn't delay our project by six months. Um so that's why you might have seen some current and grubbing going on out there. So the east end lift station, um so on the west end, we're going forward with new development. On the east end, we got a township area that we annexed um maybe fifty years ago, I'm not too sure, but quite a, quite a, quite a while ago. And they're, they're, they're still on their own wells and um septic systems. So we've had some uh good progress with this project, Maris Hansen, Thirteenth Avenue and Stagecoach, um lift station force main and water main extension project. Uh we actually awarded the project to Northwest Asphalt, they're a property owner within the project area. Um but we awarded that project to them on March fifteenth. Um we're working on the contract documents with them and getting a pre-constru- pre-constructions uh meeting scheduled. Um so a special note on that project, I have special notes on all the projects, I guess, here tonight, but. Um so if some of you witnessed the uh the testimony at one of our improvement hearings, we had another one of the property owners that testified. And they they weren't too happy about the project, they have new well, new septic out there, but we did receive an objection letter from them um late last week. Um but interestingly, they they objected to the developable area. Um that goes into all the computations for what they pay. Um they have a utility easement for a gas line running across their property, and they want us to look at reducing the developable area by that area of that, that, that that easement encumbers. Um the interesting thing about it, all the other properties are also encumbered by that that type of utility easement and probably more so. So this one requester, right, we have a project we have to pay for, that's that, that, that amount doesn't change. So um if we, we're ju- we'll just be shifting the money around of who pays what um by giving those type of deductions, because they have to s- uh uh totality, they have to pay the same amount. So interestingly, for that property, if we did this shifting of the eggs around, they would probably end up paying more because their property's not encumbered very much. So um we'll be working through all that um into the final assessment hearing, which happens at the end of the project. Um that might not get done in time to get it on the assessment roll for twenty twenty-three. Um so we'll stay tuned, uh more to come on all that, um but we'll be working with the property owners for the final assessment hearing as well. Um and uh we're a little over budget on this project. Um but uh, you know, with the with the bidding that's going out there right now, uh we did award the project um slightly over on the, on the water main. Uh you can see the budgets there, but overall, uh pretty good bids, um so stay tuned. Um with that, I think we are, any questions?
Any questions on this? I, you know, this is a difficult area, it's been in our community for a long time, and I know in the last twenty-five years, there's been discussion about bringing sewer and water in here. And um, boy, I wish we would have done it back then, it would have been cheaper. Uh but it's vitally important uh for that area to develop or redevelop and with sewer and water. And there are some water quality issues in the groundwater there, um close to that fin and boiling springs. So um while it's difficult, I think uh I'm a forward-thinking person and I just look at it and go, if we can get through this and and get organized and some redevelopment, and we'll be thankful we did it uh uh at this time versus uh, again, waiting another ten or twenty years. Counselor Brennan?
Yeah, I know that this was a tough col- um collaboration um for both the SPU and the city. And I um I know that there was a lot of conversations that occurred between the two organizations and also with the city of Savage with their water connection. Um so so great job for everybody to to work together to get that done.
Other comments, President, Madam President?
Yes, I I was just gonna say, not that our staffs aren't super busy doing everything else, but at one point, we did ta- kinda talk about, we wanted to have kind of that, you know, what we were talking about, it's taken this long to get here. What other pieces and properties around here that we have to look forward to doing this again? And maybe we kinda had talked about bringing that back at another meeting, but I know that we haven't done that, but I know we have so much other stuff that we have been doing. But it's kind of something, maybe at the next meeting, maybe we can come back and talk about that, about those other areas that are still outstanding, like boiling springs and some of those.
Yeah, I know there are some connects at both, I think sewer and water, and they kinda, I don't remember the breakdown from years ago, but um, you know, we're trying, I, I know we'd made an effort and then that kinda dropped the ball on that. But uh, you know, systems fail and and the integrity, uh you know, I think when you connect to sewer and water, I think your value goes up and that's a good thing. Um so maybe we can revisit that down the line.
And I would also add on to that, I think you at the city also thought, like we did, that once the county put their piece in place, that we would start seeing more of this. And it just seems like it's been dragging on.
Right. Counselor Whiting?
Just as far as the uh the Hanson and Mar- Maras Street uh project, uh, you know, that is an environmentally sensitive area with the boiling springs near there. Um this is something uh we need to be in front of, and it's, it has taken a long time to get there. So um I'm excited to get this moving forward for the, uh, you know, it's a natural wonder of the state back there, and if you're not familiar with that, but uh, very natural area. And I'm glad to see we're working to try and protect it.
Other comments? If not, we will move ahead then to three E, Canterbury Amphitheater, um Michael.
So uh most of you are pretty familiar with this area, but we just thought we'd put it back in perspective for you. So this is a hundred and thirty acre, four hundred and forty-five million dollar development adjacent to Canterbury Park. We've already got a number of projects completed, this is the Greystone Construction Headquarters, um twenty-six thousand square feet completed in twenty twenty-one, which also won a uh design award this year, so pretty handsome building, kind of is the anchor in that corner. This is the Triple Crown, um they are um under construction right now in their second phase, so this'll be six hundred units when it's completed. Of uh market-rate apartments and actually has three swimming pools, so something we really haven't had in the market. This is the, our Tessa Project, it's fifty-six units, sixty-two and older co-op developments, so this will be the first co-op in Shakopee. Right now, they're out um selling memberships to this and they're hoping to start construction this fall. This is the TE Miller Project, this has been approved and is in for a building permit. This is a hundred and fifty-six units, sixty uh to an older luxury apartment complex, um includes pickleball courts, um a special dining area that you can rent out. Um unlike any other product we currently have in this marketplace, TE Miller is considered kind of one of the better higher-end um apartment developers in the Twin Cities. And most of you probably driven by Canterbury Crossing by Pulte, there's a hundred and eight townhomes, they're actually selling pretty quickly, they're in for another uh six permits this week. Um so they already have, I believe, five buildings under construction, so that should be filling up pretty quickly. And then this is the last large piece, this is um the proposed amphitheater, Swerveo Development um out of Minneapolis. They also own the Armory Downtown, the Uptown Theater and a couple of other large projects, they have about ten million square feet in the Twin Cities. They are proposing this amphitheater, this is the um parking that is required by the uh users that would be around it. Um some new roads the city will be putting in, we're working with Shakopee Public Utilities and getting water and power. They'll become, at least for the forty to sixty dates, they'll be a major power user. And then uh once this gets built, they're tearing down um eight or nine barns this year in September to get all this infrastructure in here. And then once they build new barns, the rest of these barns in this area will be coming down, and this'll be a future uh mixed-use development. And this is gonna be, unlike any other amphitheater in the country, um they, Swerveo is working with their client. You can see some of the pieces they have here, they have dream seats, um skyboxes, um a a lot of open lawn. It will be the largest roofed amphitheater um in the Midwest, so the roof goes back to um the seven seventy-eight number back here. So it'll be a large roof, they're looking to do some really creative things, they, one of the things they're looking at the other day is doing a transparent roof. So particularly in the wintertime, they can light it with different um colors, so that actually when it's not being used, it's still as a feature. The other big thing this will have is the back of house, you know, most acts make all their money touring touring now because they don't sell records. Um so the back of house has been pretty important, they've been working with a lot of users on creating a real experience with some rooftop spaces. So they can look at the horse track and also have places to unwind and unload. So I think this is uh gonna be a pretty spectacular project when it's done. Uh the company that they're working with is using this as their national model for any future amphitheaters.
Questions on the Canterbury or the amphitheater? I encourage everybody, the A U A R is out and.
E A W.
E A W, I apologize, uh and it just comes in at just a little over seven hundred pages. Um so a little light reading, do, take your time, I'm up to about one hundred and forty now. Um but a lot of detailed information about impact and a lot of the, you know, the noise, the traffic, et cetera. And um that I, that uh is a big interest to me and our city council, as soon as that, when that comment period out is over, then that will work through its normal process uh over the next many, many months. Um this is almost a natural fit for what Canterbury already does, events. Um the demand is there and, you know, there's a bunch of amphitheaters that have failed over the years, there's one in Blaine that failed, Trout Air. One at the old dump in Burnsville, and we had one out in uh I think Louisville Township years ago too, that the county wrestled with for a long time. So infrastructure's here, we're upgrading eighty-three. Um, I look at it and we have, you know, we're just starting the process now. But um, looks like a great opportunity for our community and the continued build out uh, and economic development of Canterbury.
And this has also been a big project of partnerships because MVTA and Southwest Transit will be providing service to this facility. So um, MVTA is gonna be using all of their remote lots here. And Southwest Transit is gonna use their Eden Prairie and Shen Hassan lots to bus people here, so it's not all necessarily cars.
No, the engineers haven't done all their work yet, but didn't you mention that the initial designs were, a lot of that's going to be uh, in the, in the ground, sunken?
So this is about twenty-ish feet in the ground and it's about um, forty feet up. And one of the things through working through um, with some of the other potential users, the back of this was originally open to County Highway eighty-three, they're now looking at actually enclosing parts of this so that this lawn area, which is not undercover, if there's a big storm or something, people can still see the concert and kind of go under the lawn area. Originally, this was all gonna be solid and now it's actually gonna be, have a big gigantic room underneath it. So I have about a hundred thousand square feet of open space underneath the lawn area.
And again, if, you know, the sound, and I'm reading through that uh, document on the sound a lot. You know, one of the technical benefits is that it faces northeast. With the, you know, the sound is going northeast, right? And that's over our light industrial area um, there. Rather than facing, I know we've had over the years in Canterbury, have Summerfest or uh, whatever, their concerts they have, you know, it a little more impact on our community, hopefully by a little bit of some vectoring of this, of turning it. Um, that lowers the impact of noise in our community. Other questions, comments? If not, let's move ahead. Um, we value our downtown and we have three F downtown street lighting inventory and feasibility study. Steve, welcome back.
All right, we're back. So downtown street lighting, why is this any different than any other street lighting around town? Um, well, it's special street lighting, it's decorative ornamental. Um, it's actually a special lighting district and it's in the uh, central business district area, which has different um, zoning land use, which one is it, Michael? Zoning, I think it is, for that area. Um, so it, it generally matches that CBD central business district area. Um, if Brad was here, um, I I know Greg can talk about it, um, but it's old and uh, and I'll go through some stats here. But the existing system, um, I don't know how old it is actually, uh, we'll be doing a feasibility to figure all that out. But back in twenty fifteen, when Jim Henderson was here, he kinda took that street lighting, uh, the city's street lighting kind of under his ownership, and he did a, did a pretty good evaluation of the existing system down there as far as the light poles go. And uh, just some interesting numbers, there's two hundred and thirty-one ornamental decorative light poles down in that area. Um, there were in twenty fifteen, I should say. Um, forty-five of them are missing, so they didn't get stolen. They um, fell down, uh, became a safety issue, were removed and shifted, so those type of issues. So uh, when streetlight poles fall down and are knocked down, uh, we have issues, right? Um, seventy-three of them were in good condition, seventy-six were in fair condition, and thirty-seven were in poor condition. That's seven years ago, so it didn't get better um, on its own. Um, but we did, we did, you know, that was again in twenty fifteen, that was before the uh, one-on-one Causeway Bridge Project. So there's new street lightings along the one-on-one going north. There's also new street lighting on the north side of one-on-one, on the east, like by Hubert Park and beyond. Um, so uh, and also with the twenty seventeen project that we did along the Lewis Street Parking Lot and um, some street lighting along First Avenue. And then the Deco Project came in and replaced some street lighting there. But we have a ton of street lighting um, left to address in that area. So that was from the twenty fifteen study. Um, so based on that, uh, looking at the downtown, we created, the city created a twenty, a few years ago, we started looking at um, creating a capital improvement project for this area. Um, it's quasi a placeholder, we have to find funding for this project. Um, but we, we labeled it as a downtown ADA, which is um, Accessibility for Disabilities Act. We have to make sure we have uh, good pedestrian ramps, um, the concrete surfaces and all of that. Um, so that type of project plus lighting and then tree rehab, we have missing trees too, they didn't get stolen either. Uh, most of them were taken down because of, you know, poor health. Um, so we have some things that we need to give our downtown a a facelift on. But the street lighting part is probably the most difficult part. Not the most expensive, but the most difficult. Um, and and why? It's because, you know, we got streetlight poles, but be- uh, beyond that, we have some difficult and intermingled circuitry down there, some of it's old, some of it's new, some of it, we're not too sure. Um, Brad uh, came to us a couple of weeks ago and uh, we have some failed lights by Babes in that area to the south and hard repairs. So we did a bandage repair on that, I I don't know if he's done with it or not, I I think it was. But it was overhead in the Pablo's Parking Lot and some back circuitry to get them lights back on. That's some nasty bandage repairs that we don't want, um, really ever. But short of uh, not having lights down there, that's what we had to do. Um, so that's, that's happened down there, um, and that's why we need to try to prioritize the lighting. Uh, so the first thing that we wanna do is we're gonna get a consultant on board and do a good inventory. We have a light pole inventory, uh, but we're gonna be working with the SPU staff and doing a good inventory of the, the circuitry, the handholds, um, everything underground and what, if we have to replace it, um, what will, what it will uh, impact. Um, there's, it's not just pull a wire out and string it in a, of this beautiful conduit. These conduits are old, almost impossible, um, with the conduits that are down there and there's some direct buried. So uh, it's a tough project, um, because of all the streetscaping down there with the concrete and all of the pavers. Um, so it's pretty impactful. So we're gonna pick away at it in a feasibility study desktop for, um, format, once we get that inventory and figure out what it looks like with all those impacts. And then we're going to um, look at the concrete and the pavers and collectively see if it makes sense to do a standalone street lighting project, or if we simply have to go forward with the full project. We don't quite know what that looks like yet. Um, so we'd be working on that. Um, I, I talked about the uh, the Lewis Street Parking Lot, uh, the Deco Apartments. Um, but we also, we'll get to a map here. Um, on the north side of County Road sixty-nine, where this pink block is, the red, the red is the zoning for the CBD area. This pink block right here was uh, changed to the CBD uh, zoning. And that also with that, with the um, Shakopee Flats River Bluffs Project there will be um, kinda carrying that same theme of downtown into that area. Um, the developer pays for that part of the project, um, but not so for the rest of it. Um, so what will it look like down there? I mean, as far as streetlights go, these are the template streetlights that we've already started with down there with a couple of projects we've had. Um, so that is really just a real brief update on where we're headed with the downtown street lighting project. Any questions?
Actually, yeah, uh, given the emphasis on festivals and stuff in Shakopee, are, is there any look at giving, getting like uh, RGB lights for downtown? You can have color changing or management of the festival or what you have for the on-the-rails, like, you know, something of that nature?
Well, um, our, our, did that answer it? No, um, our, our intention was to go through with a LED lighting system. Um, you know, to each their own on, would they like that or not? Um, I think that, and I would suggest that we flush that out with our feasibility study. Um, you know, we will, on these light poles, they will, they are equipped with uh, external plug-in type of receptacles for our snowflake lights in the winter and other, you know, amenity type of lighting or whatever we need. Um, so why don't we, why don't I propose that we flush that out with our feasibility study?
I know it sounds weird, but uh, when the Bengals went to the Super Bowl last year, uh, Cincinnati Downtown was all orange everywhere. So all of these different businesses and the city, it's a, it's a community thing, it's involved, it's a celebration thing. So it's, it is kinda weird, but I mean, we're at the point in technology where it's commonplace.
Sounds good.
Other comments? Counselor?
One day, uh, weekend walking downtown, uh, saw one of our ser- a service truck bringing food to one of the restaurants down there, a semi going down Second Avenue and took out one of the poles. I'm sure you probably gotta remark that on the map. But uh, we may wanna look at that corridor on Second Avenue where the railroad track already has issues with poles. Um, and you know, uh, either keep trucks off of it or uh, you know, where there's corners like that, uh, be of concern where some of those lights are. Just a thought, you know, uh, thinking of that railroad area.
Well, this is uh, I think for, as we continue bringing vitality to our downtown, now we have additional residents there uh, with the Deco. Um, oh, by the way, I know where we had some of those poles, they were in the parking lot, in the Lewis Street Parking Lot. I heard that we had some poles laying down on the ground there and maybe on, I don't know if we found one on Deco, but I know we found a couple on, apparently that's where a couple were. But we, I think as we continue to bring that vitality downtown, I, I think street lighting is very important. I do like the new style, but I'm sure years ago when they did a style, everybody said that style. But actually, it, I go downtown and you look around and how many different styles are there, right? The old, kinda the ones that oxidated and then the old concrete ones with the you know, um, and I look at it and I would go, there's gotta be four or five different styles, right? And some of the, I go, boy, we need to simplify this and, and do it systematically. And so it, it pairs well with each other, it is a big area, there's a lot to it. Um, you know, and we've done some where we have, but uh, I think we're gonna try to move forward and, and do more. And obviously LED lights and hopefully partnership with the utility, don't know about the change of colors. Um, but you're right, the technology and um, might be there, maybe you take and, and ring the River City Center Building with a light and give it a neat, neat edge. Um, but those are my comments about the street light, I'm excited about it. I'm not excited about the price tag, but I'm excited about the uniform aspect of it and renewal. Others? All right. Wow, great. So uh, item number four, future agenda items, is there uh, Madam President, your board have topics that we'd like to see in the future at a joint meeting or commis-?
I personally brought up the one, and then I think um, what I would like to see is probably the EV stats. That's probably good data for this group, um, as we, cause we're using your property, our electricity, it's good to know what we're both doing jointly, so are there any others from the commission?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's something I've talked with Greg about, but uh, I, I'd like to see the feasibility of any city or spuck buildings having like solar panels on top. I know some communities have adopted mandates where new construction has to be able to support green spaces. Like on the roof, they have to be able to put trees and grass and stuff like that. Uh, so I think initiatives like that going forward, either in city buildings or even like with new big lots, like an apartment building, you have to have a park on top or something. I, I think something to that can be a great thing to keep an eye on going forward.
Anything, other commissioners?
Yeah, I guess Mike, I wrote it here, I, I'm looking at the EV data, I don't know. You know, our next item is to discuss a date, if we look six months out, we're into September. I re- you know, I'm excited to see the, that data from those spots, but I don't know if we'll have a meaningful amount by then. Um, but obviously, once we get them in there, we start tracking them and we'll, you, you guys will be the first to know, right? Um, so that's kind of important. Um, other joint topics, does our staff have ideas about? No? I mean, this, this thing's pretty good and let's keep it going. Obviously, we're setting, as we face forward, uh, you know, Canterbury, the continued revitalization of downtown, the West End. I mean, our growth is in front of us, right? And uh, um, every new start's a new customer for you guys, a business park, um, big users, small users. I think uh, when, when you grow, we grow, and when we grow, you grow, I mean, together, so.
I don't, I don't know if we're, we're picking dates today or not, but I know we work well, we have meetings on a regular basis with city. I think as, as we have, we may have a big project come up, we may have, you know, joint meetings sooner. Or it may be, eh, we don't have a lot of data yet, let's wait for that ten months versus six months, you know? So I, I would prefer that we just continue to work when we know we're gonna make a focus on it and I think it's worked well in the past. And you know, this one wasn't set and Bill and I met and we said, hey, we need to get back and get together, we have enough topics. And um, so if you're okay with that, I think that's a, that's a good way to do it. You know, as we get ideas, I can bring them to Bill and Bill gets ideas, he brings them to me and then we'll just set a date going forward.
Mr. Earl?
Yeah, I, I, I agree, I think it's important that we, we continue to hold the meetings and, and we continue to talk at this level. Uh, but as Greg had mentioned, uh, we had a while there, but we really didn't have much going on. And then all of a sudden, we had everything going on. So uh, uh, you know, if we can just kinda play it by ear, um, six months might be too soon. Actually, if we have a big project, it may be sooner than six months, so uh, it all depends on what we've got.
Um, other questions, comments? I guess I would ask that uh, I'd like to see printouts or a soft copy of the uh, of your accomplishment pages that you had, Greg?
I think
Or staff could present that?
Yeah, we just have them.
Yeah, we'll get it out.
Get that to everybody?
And are you doing more automatic meter reading or expanding that or working towards that goal and um?
Yeah, so I think uh, during our, so currently we're doing a finance uh, package, then billing's right behind that in February. And then um, we're doing an AMI package, the bids will go out um, with the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, depending on delivery time. Some of those lead times on, on meters are really long. Um, but we are using the same platform N I S C that Minnesota Valley is using. So all customers, either our service territory, Minnesota Valley, will have the same screen to look at. So that's, we really like that as well, we think that that's important, that it's uniform in this area. They're using N I S C, we're gonna use N I S C as their, as the platform. Um, so we really think that we'll switch over to the platform um, as soon as we can. And then AMI, actually to get that data back, will be really a twenty-three, twenty-four type project, depending on lead times of materials.
Well, I, I, thank you for that, um, I do wanna uh, congratulate the board and everything. It seems like you guys are just going great and working uh, together and moving forward and uh, the teamwork with the city is great. The communications uh, through council member and Commissioner Brennan has been great, uh, so we do get a lot of that uh, at the council level. Hopefully, we're getting what we need and uh, so thank you for that too. So I'm, I'm just uh, happy that uh, um, things are moving uh, forward. And uh, you guys got a lot of work to do and you've got a lot of work done, so thank you. Thank you.
Good. Madam President, is there any more uh, items before these board, joint boards?
I do, I have none, do you want us to adjourn first?
Yep.
Um, commissioners, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn until we're told to be here again later?
And a second.
Oh, second.
Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, the commission is adjourned.
Thank you. Uh, we are gonna adjourn to a date specific, so Counselor Contreras?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, April fifth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM.
A second.
I have a motion, a second, further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye? Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. We stand adjourned on this joint city council's Shakopee Public Utility Meeting for March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Thank you all.